Good evening and thank you for joining our Tuesday, September 14th, School Committee Meeting. As you can see, we're meeting remotely tonight. And we just were in an executive session meeting that started at 6 o'clock. It ended a couple of minutes ago. And we are now ready to start our regular meeting, which we will do with our Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag,
The United States of America,
America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As we start every meeting, I'm going to read the mission statement. "The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident, lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests." Is there anyone on for public comment tonight? WCAT, are you seeing anybody raise their hands? Looks like, I think we can, I can maybe see everybody. So I think we might be good. Okay, so Tom, Mr. Markham, we've got a consent agenda?
We do, yes. I move the School Committee approve the minutes of the August 24, 2021 School Committee Meeting, and accept the minutes of the July 23, 2021, and the August 17, 2021, School Committee Policy and Communications Subcommittee Meetings, and accept the minutes of the August 19, 2021, School Committee Finance and Facilities Subcommittee Meeting as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. So we need to do a roll call vote because we're all remote. So I'll start, Amy Lehman?
Yes.
Kevin Piscadlo?
Yes.
Tom Markham?
Yes.
Mike Boudreau?
Yes.
Stephen Ingles?
Yes.
Amy Wall?
Yes.
And me, Suzy Vayer. I am seeing a couple of people, additional people who've been added, who I want to give the opportunity, even though we have already done public comment, I want to take a moment, just in case any of those people who have joined wanted to speak during the public comment and didn't get on quite in time. Okay, just wanted to double check because I saw a couple of additional people that were the joint. Okay. Christine, budget items?
Good evening, everyone. So tonight, we have the second financial report of fiscal '22. This is, this report covers the month of July and August. Typically, July and August are not high expenditure months because schools are not back in session. You will see in this first page of the financial report, we have the first teacher payroll, because for this year, the first teacher payroll was September 3rd. So that's in the first line of professional salaries. So that line, we don't have any encumbrances yet because typically what we like to do is right now in Central Office, we are onboarding new staff. We have about 45 new FTEs to the district this year. That number is a little bit higher than the past two years. We have new staff due to some resignations, some retirements, and for the new COVID positions, the two new science positions. And then two new nurses, also to help with COVID. So we will, you'll see in the encumbrance column in the month of September's report, you'll see all of the known salaries for the year encumbered. So we'll have encumbrances for all staff, and we're going to be encumbering the transportation costs. We've already encumbered utilities for the year, you could see that on the utilities line. So what we like to do typically at this time of year is encumber known costs, known salaries, fixed costs. So then we know what we have to use for the next quarter and then for the next remainder of this fiscal year. This is the local appropriation page. And so this is what the town has appropriated to the school department. And just to draw your attention, the grand total for fiscal '22 was $45,343,200. Again, that's about $360,000 short from what we asked the town to give us because that includes the $360 for the six COVID positions, which we will be reimbursed by the town at the end of the fiscal year. Moving to the next page. You'll just see a summary by school. Again, until the encumbrances are there, you won't see much changes. The next page is revenues. So our three main revenue sources are local appropriation, Chapter 70, Grants and Revolving Accounts. For us in Wakefield, Grants and Revolving Accounts really are about 8% of our total budget in addition to the local appropriation. So we're fortunate to have about $3.5 million of Grants and Revolving Accounts. Now, Revolving Accounts, just to reiterate, are things that we, we collect money from user fees, athletics, transportation, performing arts, et cetera. And now those monies are going back into the programs. Also, Circuit Breaker for the Special Ed Department. Grants are things, either competitive or entitlement grants, based on our demographics for Wakefield. As you'll see in the next two pages, the Title Grants, we don't typically get until October. We had to file our reports this month, and we'll, we'll know probably by the end of October. So we have budgeted amounts for what we've applied for Title 1, Title 2, and the Sped Grants, Special Ed Grants. We'll know by the end of October if those budgeted amounts typically, because they're entitlement grants, typically those are the amounts that we'll get based on the demographics of last year's October 1 data. In the last page is our revolving accounts. Again, you'll see more activity as the months go on for our, once we are collecting more user fees for athletics, performing arts, transportation, and also for Wakefield Academy and for the Doyle School. So you'll see the revenues and expenditures for those programs. Does anyone have any questions?
All right.
Okay. I think the next item we have is the payrolls for August. We had two payrolls in August. I think we have a motion, Tom?
You've got, you're on mute, Tom.
Sorry about that, guys. I move the School Committee approve Payroll Warrants 6 and Payroll Warrant 8 as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. We need to do a roll call vote. Amy Lehman?
Yes.
Kevin Piscadlo?
Yes.
Tom Markham?
Yes.
Mike Boudreau?
Yes.
Stephen Ingles?
Yes.
Amy Wall?
Yes.
And Suzy Vayer, me, yes.
And just no gifts for this month.
So that means that I'm up, and I am not quite ready for one of my items. So, so I am, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move to the second item, and then I'm going to actually pass it to you, Mr. Markham, just so you're ready. So a number of people were a part of the 9/11 Remembrance Event that happened Saturday night. It's under my agenda item, but I was actually one of the only members that was not there due to a prior commitment. So Tom, I, I thought I might give you a moment to kind of speak about it, and then if any other members wanted to make any observations about the event. But Tom, I thought you could kind of talk about, talk about it from our perspective.
Sure. So thank you. No, I think the, the event Saturday evening, which was planned by the Council of Clergy, and obviously cooperation with Town Hall and Town officials. I think it was, it was well attended, it was incredibly well done. It was very, very solemn and very, and very serious and and really hearkened back to, you know, the horrors of 20 years ago and September 11th of 2001. There was, there was, there was a nice, a nice attendance among, among our community members. Each, the Chair of the Town Council, and the Chair of the School Committee, and that's, I think, why you're asking me, you weren't able to go. So I filled in for you best I could. Were asked to read and participate in, in a series of, of, of pre-prepared texts, which really brought to heart sort of a memory of, of September 11th, 2001, as the day unfolded. It was, it was very solemn, it was very, very well done. And it was a nice, nice memory for the, for the town to present, and even certainly speak to, you know, the type of community and the type of world that we've become since then, both for, for, for good and for not so good. But I think it was very, very well done. And I thank and congratulate the Council of Clergy for hosting the event and bringing it together.
Thanks, Tom. Any other members have anything that they want to add? Okay. Thank you all for, for attending, and I apologize that I was unable to be there. And so the, the next item on the agenda was Opening Day for Teachers. So on September 1st, the teachers came in for their first day and they were, we started the day with remarks from Doug, some remarks from, some very short remarks from me, some remarks from Aaron Krissos, and really was just about thanking teachers for kind of their hard work from last year and, and knowing that they have our support as we head into this year, knowing that this year is not anything like what we had thought it was going to be when we left last, last June. And so I did want to mention that, that, that session and that from there, and Doug will probably talk a little bit more about this as he talks, talks about the starts of school, start of schools. But the teachers went off to hear a presentation by Lynn Lyons. And so it was really nice to, to be kind of invited to kind of come and speak. And, and as I was scrolling through the 18 screens of Zoom pictures, it was really nice to see pictures of, or not pictures, video of teachers that I, my children have had in the past, and even put some faces to names of teachers that my kids had just gotten their schedule for high school, and kind of put some faces to names of their new teachers. So it was, it was really nice to be a part of. The final thing I wanted to mention was an email that I sent earlier today that is not on the agenda, so we can't really kind of talk about it in length. But I did receive an email a couple of days ago from a member of the Wakefield community who's a retired science teacher and a part of the community anti-racism group. She is a part of the Coalition for Anti-Racism and Equity in Education, the acronym CARE. And it's a statewide coalition that is putting forward and helping to pass some bills in, in both the Senate and the House regarding education when it comes to anti-racism, equity, and justice. They were looking for some endorsements, I'm not even sure that's quite the right word, but support from us as a committee going into some hearings that took place yesterday. And my kind of response back was that I wasn't able to kind of react on behalf of the committee without bringing it forward to the committee for consideration. And because it's not on the, formally on the agenda, we can't actually speak about it tonight. But I did want to get it in front of everyone, I wanted to mention it today. I'm, I'm looking to get more information about what happens now that those hearings happened yesterday, what are the next steps? And then we can talk about as a committee whether we want to kind of officially endorse the work that they're doing. So I'm putting that out there. I would say more to come on this topic at the next meeting when I have a little bit more information and when we can formally get it on the agenda. That is it from me, so I think Doug, I'm going to hand it over to you.
Thank you so much, Suzy, I appreciate it. Happy to be here this evening. Just a very quick update, just updating comments. I'm going to talk a little bit about COVID and my comments and updates, a little bit about transportation. And, and then I'd like to talk about the first few days before we go to our, our third item, which is student handbooks. So just in regard to, just an update on, on COVID. So we have completed Day 4 of school, 176 to go, four down. And, and it looks like, you know, we're off to a very quick start with COVID. We have district-wide, it looks like we have about, you know, a little over 40 students in quarantine. I haven't gotten the update as of late this afternoon, but as of earlier today, we had a little over 40 students in quarantine. I believe we have about 15 or 16 students that are positive. We, we have had some students that tested positive the day before school started, or were symptomatic and didn't come for the first day and were tested and ended up positive. And so we want to thank their parents for, for kind of being very quick to get them tested and, and to kind of let us know. And please keep in touch with us, and we'll do what we can to support you in any, any way possible so that we can get your, your children back as soon as we possibly can. So that's, that's a quick update on where we are with COVID. In, in regard to, to vaccinations, our vaccination rates continue to be very strong for the district. And so we are seeing that, you know, our numbers in the 16 to 19-year-old age group is, is creeping up. We are also seeing that the number of students with one vaccination in the 12 to 19-year-old age group are very strong as well. And we'll have more information to report on that on Friday with our WCAT call with, with district leaders. And so in, in for the past several, for, for the past year, we've been meeting on Friday morning with the, with the Wakefield leadership, including Board of Health members, to report on kind of where we are with COVID as a town. We also update our data dashboard for the town that, that can be found and accessed through the, through the town website. So we call it the Wakefield Data Dashboard. So if you put that in, into Google, it will take you to it. So that's a quick update in terms of where we are with COVID. An update on transportation. And so I'm, I'm sure you've seen in, in the news that there is a terrible shortage for, terrible shortage of bus drivers throughout the state. And so there was an article in The Globe about, you know, the National Guard members being kind of pulled in to drive buses. And so we haven't heard that they're being pulled into Wakefield, however. And so we, we right now are short one driver, which is equal to one bus. And so that has kind of made our other buses in the afternoon, for our afternoon transportation, more crowded than they normally would be. It also has lengthened the schedules. With more students on bus, buses and more stops, the schedules are longer. We're also kind of negotiating new drivers that are new to Wakefield and that are starting off, and, and bus companies are backfilling people as fast as they possibly can. So we had a few new drivers on the first day, which the morning transportation worked out really well, and it has been going well. The afternoon transportation, however, has been a little bit slower, and the buses have been more crowded than we would like. And so when, as we bring a new driver online and as we bring, we're able to bring another bus on in the afternoon, we feel like that's going to lower our numbers on each bus, and it will also make schedules go a little bit more quickly. I don't know if you want to add anything here, Christine?
No, well, thank you, Doug. I just want to thank all the parents for reaching out with their, their questions, their concerns. Because as you remember, last year was not a normal year for transportation. We weren't able to bus the majority of our students. So for some students, this is like the first time ever on a bus or in two years being back on a bus. So we appreciate their patience and their, as they're remembering which stop there is because the routes look different. Because in the afternoon, as Doug said, the routes are a little bit longer than they would normally look. NRT has been a great partner for us, they're working with us. They're telling me, hopefully within the next six weeks, we'll have our fleet back to where it should be. So we're giving daily updates to our families and Deidre Santanago in the Transportation Department, I can't say enough about her because she has been fielding calls and responding to every single one seven days a week. So just thank you, you can reach out to me at Central Office, and we'll do our best to, to make sure that everyone gets to and from school safely with masks and with all the safety protocols in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine, I appreciate it. And so that's, that's where we are with, with kind of comments and updates. Yes, Michael?
Sorry, Doug, I didn't want to interrupt you earlier when, when you jumped into the transportation. On the COVID, what were the figures as of last Friday? Do you have those handy? I'm curious what they were.
I don't have them handy, Michael, I think.
Okay, then later, don't worry about it, I was just curious. If you don't have them handy, don't worry.
Certainly get those.
Unless Kevin has them, and he's raising his hand for that.
I'm not around the, I don't have the numbers, but I do have a quick question for the superintendent. Are any students participating in test and stay? And if they are, is that included in the 40 number of the number of students in quarantine, or is that an additional figure?
Right, so test and stay. So test and stay and symptomatic testing are the two programs that we are participating in that are run and facilitated through the state. And so do not have that, those programs up and running, Kevin? The state is behind, both in the distribution of test kits and also in setting up training for our nurses to start the testing. So we've been working overtime, and Christine Bufagna has been working overtime with our nurses to, to kind of coordinate this with a company called CIC, which is a, a second-party vendor that's being, that's hired by the state to stand up this programming. And so Christine had a, had a conference call with them this afternoon. Christine, can you share a little bit about where we are there?
Sure. First off, we are currently collecting consent forms for students and staff and adults in our district, and that's working really well. It's all online, and it's sorted by school. So our nurses are site coordinators for their school. So they have the ability to see who has signed up because testing cannot happen without consent. So that's working really well. We are just struggling, Crush the Curve is the software that the, the state is using in order to record COVID tests. So we do not have access to that software yet. So we anticipate receiving that by early next week. And we have our training scheduled for next Wednesday. We do have the kits on site, so the, the plan, the timeline is by the end of next week to be rolling this out for, for students that, Kevin, to answer your question, that yes, we're only doing for test and stay or symptomatic testing. So we would only be testing those students that A, have consent forms on file, and then would qualify under one of those two criteria. But the nurses would be the ones who would make that decision and would administer the test.
Right, okay, thank you.
Amy, go ahead.
I have a couple of questions, again, shocker. So with the COVID testing, so Christine, you just said the testing kits are in?
Yes.
Right, okay, so we're waiting for the training to come from the state?
So two things, the training and the software.
And the software, okay. And then I'm trying to think of what I was going to ask in regards to that. If the, so as of right now, if a student is a close contact and they're not vaccinated, they're home for 10 days, right? Is it 10 days? I forget.
Before our testing program?
Right, yep.
Yes.
Okay, so say a kid tests on Friday, I mean, is a close contact on Friday, and this still hasn't rolled out yet. When it rolls out, are they still going to have to finish their 10-day quarantine? Or are they going to be able to test at that point?
So if they've given the consent, if the parent has given consent that they can be tested, that's first, we're going to have to confirm that. So then they would have to, if they were a close contact and showing no symptoms, they would have to, they would be part of the test and stay, so they'd have to be tested for five days.
Okay. And so as of right now, though, we have these 40 kids that are in quarantine that, I am assuming that are not vaccinated, are just at home until we can get this rolled out. Are they able to test elsewhere right now to show a negative test?
So they can test after five days, so they fall into protocol.
Seven day?
Yeah, so they would be in the seven-day range, so they, so they could come out after, after the seventh day.
Okay.
It would be the eighth day, technically, right?
Okay. And then I had a couple of other questions just about, so the COVID.
Amy, yeah, one quick question, only if you don't mind, on that line, Mike, did you have something on that line of discussion?
I did, sorry, Amy.
That's okay.
Christine, on the consent forms, what percent of the children have we received consent forms from thus far, roughly?
So we're just slightly over 50% of our enrollment has given consent.
Great, thank you.
But that's a rolling, and it's also a rolling system, so anyone can sign up any day. There's no, there's no cutoff date.
Thank you.
I had a, a related question, Amy, to Amy, to yours, that I've, I've been getting a lot of questions about the fact that kids who are exposed outside of school, right, so they have the exposure outside of school, they're, they're not eligible for test and stay because test and stay in the symptomatic testing is for exposures in school and symptoms in school. And so those kids who are exposed outside of school have no other recourse other than to be out for the seven days and to, assuming that they test negative on day five. And, and I've been asked a number of times, why is it that if they were to provide a negative test, not, you know, some little nose swab that, that they show up at the door with, but like a formal PCR test that says negative? Then if a parent is willing to go back every day and get their kid retested, why can't they show up at school? And I think that's a completely valid question. So I wanted to ask it here because I suspect that it's a state thing, not a us thing. And I, I just want to get that kind of out on the table, that that's not something that we're saying we can't take. It's the state saying that we can't take it, or maybe that's not the case. So I just, Doug, if you could comment on that, or Christine?
I would be happy to. It, it, it kind of defies logic, right? If someone were to get a test from their doctor, let's say. I, I was on the phone yesterday with a parent that very kindly asked, if I get a test from my doctor for five consecutive days, could my daughter return each day with that test? And, and the answer, and I didn't know the answer to the question. So we reached out to the Mass Department of Public Health and spoke to an epidemiologist there. They said that it's not likely, but we would have to double back and check with the Department of Education. We did that, and we were told by the Department of Education that they, that they cannot approve that at this point in time. Right, and so that, that's the guidance that we've gotten. I, I, I'm not crazy about the answer. I don't like the answer, I think it defies logic. But if, if that's what they're saying, that, you know, that's what we need to do, then I think we need to follow the guidance that we're given based on, on quarantine and how we're handling that. I make the concern on the part of both the department and Mass DPH is, what are, what are the limitations, right? So what happens, so you know, the, you know, the epidemiologist played a little devil's advocate with, with me and said, you know, so what would happen if, if a parent did a, got a test, an antigen test and tested for five days, why couldn't they return? You know, and then she would say, well, they're not a medical professional. Well, if we had a medical professional. I, I think the concern on, on the department side is that it's just how do you manage that? What are the checks and balances? What are the checks and balances, right? And so I, I think that that, for those reasons, they've said that, they've said no, right? That a student would be unable to return, that they feel like it would be a risk that couldn't be managed. And for those reasons, they would say no. So I hear you, and so yes, it is the state, you're correct in your presentation and your question, Suzy. So I hear you, and so yes, it is the state, you're correct in your presentation and your question, Suzy. Um, but that's where we're at.
And I, I just, I, that seems crazy to me, right? That, that see, if our goal is to keep kids in school, that seems absolutely counter to what we're trying to do for kids. And I get Doug, that you don't have any legs to stand on, but I do think we should encourage parents to. Pound the, the, um, Desi on this and, and I don't know if we as a school committee could push back on Desi. Um, regarding this, but to me, that, that just feels really counterintuitive, especially when you're talking about a PCR test. I get the antigen tests, like I, I get that you can't show up with one of those little things where you can't verify who actually took the test. But with a PCR test, you can. Um, so, uh, I, yeah, I think we should talk about as, as a group. Uh, whether we can, um, provide feedback to Desi, um, that we don't, we don't believe that that guidance makes sense. If, if our, um, if our goal is to keep kids in school and, and it's too conservative, it's just, it's way too conservative. Um, so Amy, I'll let you go back, cause I know you had a whole long list of questions.
Okay, I didn't say a long list. Um, just to, to piggyback off what you said, yeah, it makes zero sense. We want the kids in school. But here we are forcing these kids out of school for seven, ten or fourteen days, and there's no remote option. So it, it just, it's all backwards to me and that makes no sense, but, um, I'll move on. So the COVID dashboard is the, the one that you said is the Wakefield data dashboard. Is that the only place people can get? Um, the results from, last year, I think you sent out emails every week?
I, we will send emails again.
Okay.
Weekly, so we'll, we'll send a, a weekly update. Um, and we'll also give that information and it will be posted, we'll give it verbally. And we'll also be posting that information through the town website, Amy.
Okay. Uh, where else am I? So for the bus drivers, now to change subject, do we hire the, oh, go ahead.
Before you change subjects, just, just to go back, um, you know, something that, that you had said, um, to start off. Was, you know, i- in regard to, so we, so this really just is, is incumbent upon us. To go as quickly as we can to stand up, um, test and stay, right? And so that's kind of what our response is, right? And just in regard to a comment that you made, there isn't, you said there's no remote option, right? So in the past, when students were positive or in quarantine, they did not have a remote option either, right? And so we, we were not, um, providing remote options. We had a remote, remote option for students that were in full remote, but there was a range of supports that were in place. Um, last year, right? And so we're not quite there yet.
Right, no, I meant more as the kids were learning online last year, yeah.
Can I jump in on that same top, topic you just talked about with the vaccine rates? Doug, what's the progress on getting yearly vaccination rates versus grouped in bands of sixteen and nineteen or twelve and nineteen? Cause that's somewhat useless because, well, you know why it is, because it talks about kids that are in college now. That don't really affect our kids. So have you heard anything about them getting bands of one year each?
Yeah. Yeah, um, so, so what we've done is we've reached out to Mass DPH. Um, and we've asked them for that breakdown. I think I shared in our last meeting. That we, they, they didn't have someone in that could provide it. So what we've, we've actually had to do is do a FOIA request to kind of ask for an annual breakdown. And we've done that, and so we have yet to hear back formally from them, but my working theory is that we will get that back. You know, as soon as they can provide it. I think in a parallel to that, Michael, I think what we're gonna need to do. Is, you know, survey people to figure out vaccination rates, um, just to be able to provide. If we're, in, in our mind, we need to prepare for October one, right? And, and to provide a percentage of our working community, and that includes adults and students, to be able to report. Accurately and thoughtfully about where we are in regard to the eighty percent number that the commission, the commissioner of education uses. Um, and so that's kind of what we're working toward, but we have not heard back on the annual, uh, rates yet, Michael.
Yeah, you're reading my mind, and I think it's crazy that we have to do a FOIA to get this information. That seems insane as well, but. It is what it is, I guess. Thank you.
Certainly, I cut, I cut you off, Amy, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Um, oh, and that just brought up another question for me too. The test and stay, is that an option for staff as well?
It is.
Yes, okay. They, same, they would have to opt into it?
Yes.
Okay, um, okay, so now the bus drivers, is that something, do we hire them? Or is that the transportation company that we use that hires them?
The transportation company hires them.
Okay, and are they doing, uh, I mean, I assume that they're trying to get as many people as they can employed. Are they doing any kind of outreach or things like that?
They have a number of drivers in the queue that are working on getting licensed. Um, and completing their paperwork to be employed as a bus driver.
Okay.
It's my understanding that they have several drivers in the queue. Um, and, you know, we're hoping that that has a positive impact on us sooner than later. Um, to get our fifth afternoon bus in play, but the, they hire, um, and we contract their services.
Okay, so no timeline on that yet?
And we're also at the mercy of the Registry of Motor Vehicles, because they only give the test, the CDL license. I see Suzy's reaction to that. They only give that certain times of the month. And they only allow a hundred and thirteen people to take the test per month.
Crazy.
So, but. Fortunately, NRT has fifty-nine people taking the test at the end of September.
Okay.
So hopefully we'll get, if they all pass, hopefully, um, we were promised, Wakefield has promised one of the, the people who pass.
Okay, so the beginning of October, fingers crossed?
We hope so, we hope, but, um, that's the timeline.
Okay, um, and I think that's all I had for right now.
So one other note about transportation, um, on, because day one in the afternoon just took. Really much, much longer than we thought was reasonable. On day two, um, Tim O'Brien actually got on the bus. And, you know, coached up or trained bus driver, um, on the streets of Wakefield, kind of real time, on the job training. Um, not his job, but, uh, flexible, willing, and I think that that really speaks to kind of, um. The work that Christine's doing with, with, with Deidre Santanato. Um, we're just trying to really support and get this going well. So we're also learning that, um. Uh, we might be getting a break with traffic as more streets open up in the coming weeks as well.
Fingers crossed on that.
Do you? Okay, you have my attention.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, so, so that's where we're at, um.
Any other COVID questions, you guys? I know I have one more, but go ahead, Amy.
Hold on, taking my hand down. Well, the good news is a lot of them are answered with everyone else had the same questions, um. And I asked about this, I think, at our last meeting. I know there's a flow chart and I know it's somewhere. But last year they sent it home in at least the elementary folders, and I thought that was beneficial. I'm a visual learner. Um, and it actually, Amy asked a couple of questions, which been, if you had the flow chart, you would have been able to follow. So I don't know if that's something we could send to parents, just the link to go to the state, here's, here's the flow chart for quarantining. And then we talked about the test and stay, it looks like best case scenarios like may start the week of the twenty-seventh, so hopefully. And then the quarantine number forty, would you say the majority is at the middle school?
It is.
Yeah, so that's, that's where I've gotten a lot of questions. I have a child in the middle school. So there's a lot of questions about COVID quarantine learning. Um, I know we have four headcounts, are they, as COVID teachers, right? Are they full time and where are they? Is there like one for all of elementary, one for middle, one for high? And are they actually in their roles right now?
So we have, uh, two at elementary, right? And, and one at the middle and one at the high school. And these positions will support teachers and students, um, as they need to go out on quarantine, right? And so we're also working actively with the WEA, um, on a memorandum of understanding. That will guide kind of how we will support students as well.
Okay, so the kids that are.
Can I just jump in quick?
Go ahead.
This point, just in terms of, um, all of the positions are hired for now, but, um, you know, kind of what Christine was speaking to earlier about onboarding new staff. Um, the middle and high teachers, um, have just started very recently, so I know that they're thinking. Is in quarantine since day one, but just wanted to put that point out there, that we're getting it up and running as fast as possible.
Right, so it's really not in place yet and, which is okay, I just wanna, I know I've had a lot of feedback and questions, so I just want us all on the same page, like.
Yeah, I just bring that up if, if, uh, parents, as I haven't heard from the, the COVID teacher yet, it's because we're still moving as quickly as we can to, um. Get the protocols up and, up and running.
So, so what, what we envision maybe going forward, if you could just, I'm gonna speak to what a day in a life of a quarantine student would look like. That isn't in the test and stay program. They would go to Google Classroom, does anyone have that? What it would look like?
So we're, we're still working out the particulars on that, we're still negotiating with the union.
Okay.
So we, we can probably m- more accurately report on this, um, in our next meeting, right? Um, you know, right now, we have, students are gonna be able to access assignments. Um, their, their assignments are gonna be aligned with what's happening in class. There'll be follow-up, um, with a teacher. So that students will get credit for their assignment. It will also count as their day of attendance, right? So we'll have all this information in our next meeting is our, is what we're shooting for.
Yeah, and I think it's important for parents to know that if your child is in quarantine and they're getting their assignments and checking in, that it's not an absence. Your child will not be absent.
Correct, correct.
Will that go for other, um, illness absenteeism as well or just COVID?
Um, I don't know, Amy, I think that's a great question. I, I. I, I feel like we can, we can check on that and get back to you in that, in our next meeting or sooner. We probably can get back to you sooner, we can report to you individually, but we can work back to the larger committee and certainly the community. Um, when we're in front of the cameras in, in two weeks.
Okay, thanks.
Certainly.
And when you do the weekly report, will it show the quarantine number by grade level, um? For elementary and secondary?
Yes, it will be broken out by school like it was last year.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Certainly. Any other questions about COVID, about buses? Fun stuff, I, now I get to move on to the, to the, kind of the good news, um. I can tell you, just a quick report on the first days of school for students, faculty and staff. Um, so, you know, myself, uh, Christine Bufagna, Karamaro and, and Rosie. Um, made our way around to all of our schools on the first day. And so I can't tell you how excited both kids were, parents were. Um, and I think of, of, of all the groups, I think teachers were most excited out of everybody. You know, I think, you know, teaching and having kids in school, it's, it's what we do as administrators and as teachers. And I think we were thrilled, I don't, and I think I speak for the administrators, and I think I'm gonna take a leap and say I speak for teachers here as well. You know, I think that they could not have been happier to welcome back students and families. Um, to individual elementary schools, the middle school, as, as well as to the high school. You know, I think that the orientations that they did in preparation, um, and that the days leading up to, um, welcome, welcoming back students. I will tell you, I think teachers and administrators worked really hard to prepare buildings, prepare classrooms. And to make sure that the orientations and, and students had an opportunity to get in and, and be prepared. Our Acceleration Academy, um, that we ran at the end of the summer, I think was a remarkable success. It, it was really like a soft opening, um, especially for our kindergarteners. We essentially split classes in half and had half of our students attend one week and then half attend the following week. Um, I will tell you that, eh, again, I think that that brought kind of any anxiety or concern that. Students had or how they might have been feeling a little anxious about going to school or starting in a new school. I think that that brought the temperature right down. Um, I can tell you that teachers were ecstatic about having the opportunity. And so, um, this Acceleration Academy was a grant-funded opportunity. Um, that we hopefully will be looking to continue in the future. Um, when we do things like this and they're so successful. The reason why we shouldn't be, you know, to continue it, right? Funding should not be a deterrent, or it's not going to be a deterrent from our perspective, right? So for us, we need to figure out just how to raise the money if it's outside of the regular day budget. What grants do we need to apply for? What donations do we need to apply for? Or how, or how might we creatively do this to keep it going? And so, uh, we need to, to especially thank all of the teachers that took part in the Acceleration Academy. Um, and also to, um, our curriculum coordinator, Lindsay Moska, who headed up, and Val Dreinen. Then headed up the math component for our eighth and, and tenth graders. So, am I missing anything there, Kara?
No, I think you have it covered.
So that, that's a quick on Acceleration Academies. So our, our teachers were remarkably prepared for the first days that they were in. Um, eh, if you, if you were to drive around Wakefield on the, on Monday and Tuesday, on the thirtieth and thirty-first. You would have seen full parking lots or cars coming and going. Those are teachers in prepping their classrooms and getting everything ready. On the first and second, those were teacher days, um, teacher professional development days. Um, and those days were important for teachers at the school level and the buildings to get together, um, and spend time with one another. Um, and also to get prepared as, as grade level teams to welcome students back to their classrooms. And so we did not have a traditional opening with everyone in one place at one time. We, we did our opening via Zoom, which was kind of a plan B, uh, but we really wanted to, to kind of take. Um, a very conservative approach and be as safe as we possibly could. So we opened, um, our kind of opening remarks via Zoom. And so as Suzy said, you know, I said a few words, Erin, Erin Crisos very thoughtfully said a few words. Um, and then we, we welcomed Lynn Lyons. Um, for those of you that are, are not familiar with Lynn Lyons, she is a national speaker, a counselor and psychotherapist. That has done a lot of work around normalizing anxiety. And, and really kind of creating, uh, practical approaches and how to manage anxiety. Um, and, and not just manage it, but recog- try to recognize it and kind of understand that. You know, being anxious in certain situations is not uncommon. In fact, it's more common than it is not, right? And so, um, what she does is really kind of promote practical. Um, ways to kind of approach anxiety and, and kind of work through stressful situations. The timing could not have been better. Just full disclosure, she is not a relative. Um, I would love to welcome her to the Lyons family tree, take credit for her, uh, brilliance, but, um, that's not the case. She's not a relative. Um, I did get several notes on that, um, a few people thought she was my wife, no, not, not my wife and no relation, please. Um, but, but in regard to focusing us, the start of our year and welcoming students back. Um, you know, I, I think it was really a wonderful way to kick it off. She had said repeatedly in her presentation. This information is not only for children, it's for adults as well. And so I, I think it was very helpful and kind of helping us get in the right mindset, um, to, to bring, to bring students back. I also need to, to recognize and especially thank, um, Mike Morell. Um, and Mrs. Morell for really thoughtfully putting together, um, a student performance to start our, the kickoff of the year. Which was just so exceptionally done, um, and that also kind of came through the coordination and facilitation. Of, of Tom Banker and his leadership as well, so we need to, to recognize and thank him as well. Uh, but our first, our first days, um, I think have been, have been good. There have been challenges. We've been out of school for many, many months. Um, we're back in pre-COVID schedules, we're back in full athletic schedules, we're back in full transportation schedules. Um, there's still a lot of space for us to improve across the board in regard to transportation. And in regard to kind of how we're supporting students, um, but we're working at it every single day. Um, but that's kind of where we are and that's what I have to report in regard to our first few days. Any questions before I move on to handbooks? Now, thank you.
I, Doug, I actually have one that I should have asked before, but it like flew out of my head and then it came back while you were talking, um. Lunches.
Yeah.
So, we're, you know, we're in this situation where, uh, out of the gate, we have, have kids that are testing positive. Um, and, you know, and we, we decided. I would say actively decided to kind of have lunch in the way that we typically would have had lunch. Although, although I won't say typical, right, but there isn't the spacing, there aren't more lunches. We, we knew we couldn't do that from a scheduling standpoint, and lunch. And lunches now become kind of the really problematic piece, particularly for the younger kids, because that's where they are considered close contacts, right? In the classroom, they're not because they've got their masks on, but at lunch, that is more problematic. Can you talk about whether um eh, eh, kind of coming, my expectation is kind of coming out of the gate and, and having positive cases. We did say it was mostly in the middle school, but you do have kids that are not vaccinated in the middle school. Are we stepping up the use of outdoor space and other spaces for lunch in particular to try to help alleviate that? And I know we're on day four, so I realize like that's not a, a terribly fair, fair question. But I've, I've had a couple of people ask me about it, and, and I think it's a fair question to say, you know, how can we be more aggressive with using the outdoor space, especially while the weather is nice, to get kids outside? Um, to spread kids out and to try to reduce our, our um you know, creating a situation where kids are, are close contacts.
Yeah, I, I, I will say at the middle school, I think that they opened with Plan A. Um, and they have been really, I think exceedingly aggressive. Um, and, and we can talk more about this, and, and maybe we can even have an administrator join our next meeting to talk a little bit more um about this. Um, but Meg Webb, Andrew Tetrault and Allison Hammer are the principal and assistant principals at the middle school. I think that they have, um, I think that they opened with an aggressive plan and a rotation to have, have students get outside. Um, and we're also looking at, and they've kind of modified that plan to make space. Um, and they're talking about moving tables into other open areas to create more space. Um, so I, I think that they have, um, so they're, they're feeling, they're feeling it, right? And so, and they're trying to respond, I think, very quickly and very aggressively to be, you know? Um, and so I know Kara has unmuted, and I'm sure she wants to, to add to this.
Yeah, I, I can add to it just to support that. Um, a, a, agree. I think, you know, lunch, I think going into this year, year was a big um topic of conversation, but I think Allison, Andrew and Meg are doing a phenomenal job. Um, just kind of, they started out with a plan to really um spread out as much as possible. Um, even looking at the, the twelve-foot tables to spread students as much as possible. Um, I know that they're rotating out a team. Um, they're taking, they are taking advantage of, of the nice weather and they have since day one. Um, I know that they're ro- rotating out um a team every lunch period to reduce space in the classrooms. Uh, sorry, in the cafeteria. Um, and again, you know, I was over there again this morning and they were troubleshooting further. And um I know Tim O'Brien, our facilities director, has an appointment there um in the morning, and they're assessing ways in which they could possibly spread out even more. Um, set up different tables in different spaces. I know they've moved, moved in um the fire department just to make sure we're not, um, you know, there's no fire hazards anywhere. So it, we're still in problem-solving troubleshooting mode to just see how we can make it even better. Um, but I would say that they are aggressively um looking at everything day by day.
Awesome. Thank, thank you for that update.
And, and I will also add that the, the same types of conversations are happening and the same type of planning is, is happening at the high school and the elementary schools as well.
Have they started planning for cold weather?
In regard to?
Outdoor eating?
Yes, I think they, they know that the outdoor eating has a shelf life, unfortunately. Um, so that's, I think, prompting the conversation around, um, just continuously thinking about um ways to spread as much as possible without again impacting the schedule by having, the lunch schedule that we had last year was just, um, you know, it, it really significantly impacted the academic schedule. So we're trying to stay within the bounds of that, but look at um different creative ways to spread out.
Yeah, that'd be good just to have a, something in place sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
Well, we can get that random October snowstorm, you know?
They have right now that the plan, you know, they're, they're kind of, um, you know, if, if a team, right now they have, if a team was set to um eat outside and it's raining, they are moving that group into their classroom seat too. So I don't think that that would be a sustainable plan for the entire winter. So that's why we're trying to keep getting creative.
Cool, thanks.
And, and just as a visual, my understanding is that the certain-sized table, there's only allowed four kids there, and a certain-sized table, there are only allowed so many kids there. And kids, at least my student knows that, she said that table was full, so I had to move to a table with a room. So I know they, they are monitoring.
They're looking to take the, they're, they're trying to take the longer tables and chunk them and have like, like you're setting like a group of four, maybe on the side with some spacing in between and another group of four, kind of as much as possible. Um, so they are, you know, they've been doing that since day one.
Yeah.
The, the high school is doing the same thing.
Yeah. I think we're talking about Galvin just because there was more students in quarantine, again, just half the school isn't, um, you know, vaccinated, so. Yeah, or not.
Yep. So on la- the last um item on my agenda is um school handbooks. So we've updated handbooks. Um, we send them out to our, our legal counsel. Um, they review them, provide um feedback and guidance for us. I think we've, we've provided both redline versions and um finished documents um for the school committee to see. I know Kara could, could give a brief overview in regard to any uh, eh, to the changes that took place and also answer any questions that you might have.
Sure. Yeah, so um really the process starts in, in the summertime, and we have all of our, our principals at the building levels to look at the handbooks and make, you know, just whatever updates um they see, whether it's change of staff. I know this year it was bringing the schedules back to, to pre-COVID in terms of start time, dismissal time, um that sort of thing. Um, pre-K is um uh moved into the elementary handbook. It's kind of one handbook for pre-K and elementary, and then we have the Galvin handbook and then the high school handbook. So principals and their team really get first eyes on them and make um whatever updates they feel um are appropriate based on current status. And then I help to facilitate uh the process of having our handbooks be reviewed by our attorneys. And I know you had uh the redline version, so I didn't wanna keep everybody on until ten thirty tonight going through every single suggestion. But the high-level overview is really, um, you know, like I said, the schedules were updated. All, you know, current school committee members and current uh staff were updated. Um, there was a lot of formatting, um suggestions. There was um wordsmithing suggestions that were more legally compliant. When it came to any policies that were highlighted within the handbooks, they made sure to do a cross-match to make sure that uh the most recent um policies adopted by school committee were, were also reflected in the handbooks because sometimes that can get overlooked. And then just to make sure that the links were appropriate as well. Um, they did have, you know, they, they had some suggestions that weren't immediate, but things kind of like, eh, you know, which I, again, I can put forward to the policy subcommittee. Um, you know, with, with Doug and, and the policy subcommittee, just suggestions around, you know, the policy is, you know, pretty good right now, but you might wanna look at these parts in the future, but it's not pressing now, so we can pass those along too as the policy subcommittee continues to review and update um policies. But that, but that was really it. There was nothing, um, you know, our fa- our new face covering policy was an ad to make sure that we had that in across all handbooks, but um a lot of, a lot of the content was consistent with, with prior years other than those updates, but um I'm happy to answer any questions if anything popped up or stood out to anyone. Doug, I may need your help on some of it. Yes, Amy.
Only thing that popped up is the, a couple of times it mentions the arrival time is twelve thirty-five, and I thought the Doyle was still in a full-day mode.
They are. Could you be specific, like, do you mean afternoon cohort, eh, was some of the afternoon cohort language left in?
No, it was like attendance policy. Um, I'm in section one. I think I'm on the second, oh no, so. I think I'm on the second page. It was a couple of different times, Dolbea Greenwood Walton Woodville uh under attendance, A, A little A, no, A little B. That students are expected to arrive to school by eight twenty-five, twelve thirty-five PM. Then it came up again, and tardiness. So it was just an attendant instance, and I was, yeah.
Do that is an outdated line when there used to be half-day, I mean, I, I wonder if the half-day pre-K or half-day K, that, we just didn't catch that? I'll double check.
Alright.
Because you're right, it should be, it, it should all be full-day um status right now. Anything else?
Um. I would love to have the subcommittee, the policy subcommittee just take a look at the language around dress code. Um, but the, eh, and I, I, I think it's, it's fine for right now, but the, the language in the Galvin um I thought was um pretty specific. And um I know Doug, you and I have had some conversations about dress code in the past and just um um, it, it's not entirely clear to me what rights we really have around that. I've, I've gotten some feedback from, from parents about kids who've been talk, spoken to about, you know, the shoes that they had on being too high. Um, you know, eh, eh, at a dance or, you know, some, some things that felt like not terribly appropriate in, in, and I, I just would love a little bit more um insight into what is appropriate for dress code policies and what's not. Um, Kevin, I, like, that is not a high priority with, with all the other things that you guys have going on there, but I just, I think it might be interesting to um, to take another look at that, because I don't know how long that language has been in that existing handbook.
Is it a question about practice and interpretation, or is it a question about the actual lan-
The language is very specific in the Galvin. Um, it talks about um from armpit to armpit and within, you know, a certain length on your thigh. Um, and I just, eh, and I remember there being discussions at the Galvin that your shorts had to, to go down as far as your fingertips if you were standing up, was like the guidance that they used. And, you know, the fashion right now is that girls are wearing shirts where there, um, there's a little bit of their midriff showing. Like, that just is what it is. Um, and so I, I, and I, I fundamentally have a, a problem with calling girls out in particular, and there is, there is no reference in the, the language that is focused on girls, I want to be clear. Um, but eh, eh, you know, I, I think the hi- the way that the high school has theirs written feels much more appropriate to me than the way that the language was written for the middle school. Um, but again, it's not like, I don't think that we need to make a big, huge deal about it, but I do think it would be, it would be good to take on a second look at that.
I, I think eh, just even in terms of what you're saying around consistency, it's probably, you know, eh, there are parts of the handbooks that have kind of gone on year to year, and I think Doug and I recognize that, and we um, you know, just have, over the years, been kind of chipping away, but it's probably worth doing a, um, like a big overview of the handbooks in general, because to even match up, like if high school's written in a way that's better worded, I think, you know, could it make sense that Galvin just follows suit? And, and I can add that to um part of, um, when I was talking to Doug earlier today, part of our plan was to do a combination of, of taking the suggestions for the lawyer, from the lawyer about which policy should um be looked at a little more carefully, and then I can add the dress code. Um, it hasn't been reviewed since I've been here. Doug, I don't know about you. Um, so I think it's a little.
So I, I believe that the dress code has been reviewed.
Oh, okay, sorry.
No, um, but I, I, I think we can take it up again, and I'm ha- happy to take a look about, you know, the parallel consistency between middle and high. I also think that, you know, um, in regard to an explanation about how it works at the middle school, it might be worth a conversation with the middle school admin, right? And so, so the, the, the big part, eh, and a lot, and, and any of our policies are only as good as our ability to thoughtfully implement the policy, right? And so that's really the most important piece, right? And so, um, you know, I, I think we can maybe start taking, and take up this work with the policy and communication subcommittee, but then bring it back to the larger committee as well, and also, and, and hear more from the middle school administrators as well.
Yeah, I think that, that would be great. Again, I'm not, I don't think this, this is urgent. It's just that in the review of the handbook, it kind of jumped out at me a little bit, the, the way that the middle schools is written versus the way that the high schools is written.
Yep.
So we need a motion to um, to approve these, correct? If any, no, does anybody else have questions? Alright, Tom?
Uh, excuse me, I move the school committee approve the uh twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two student parent handbook for Wakefield Public Elementary Schools, Galvin Middle School and Wakefield Memorial High School as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Uh, we need to do a roll call, eh, roll call vote. Amy, Lehman.
Eh, don't you say discussion?
Oh, I haven't been doing that tonight. Holy mackerel, discussion.
So we just gave a few um edit suggestions. We're vote, it's okay to vote on before the editors are made?
So I'm, I'm feeling like, so my edit suggestions, to me, Amy, your edit s- eh, suggestions around the timeframes are like, almost like typos, right? So they, they can clean those up. And for me, I, I don't believe that the um, the dress code language is egregious in any kind of way that I have um an issue with voting on it at this time. I think it's time for us to take another look at it, um, but I'm, I'm comfortable with it going the way that it is. I, I just think that we need eyes on it.
Okay.
So yeah, I, I, I'm not going to suggest that we make a motion to like um, um amend the language that's in there. I just, I would like us to take a, a, another look at it, but not to hold up approving what we've got.
Okay. You could always condition it too, to say, to add, eh, you know, to fix the typos that Amy brought up. Um.
There we go.
Else comes up, we can leave it open for discussion.
Tom, you wanna reread that motion?
Uh, sure, but that's a terrific idea. Um, okay. So, so um I would, I guess for the record then, withdraw the prior motion. Whoever seconded it, would you agree to withdraw the motion, the second?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have to vote on that?
Uh, no, because we didn't vote to accept it in the first place. So it's just the two people that would have made it.
Okay.
Um, so I move that school committee approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two student parent handbooks for Wakefield Public Schools, Elementary Schools, Galvin Middle School and Wakefield Memorial High School as presented and with suggested edits by school committee members.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, just discussion. Seeing none. Uh, roll call vote. Amy Lehman.
Yes.
Kevin Piscato.
Yes.
Michael Boudreaux.
Yes.
Stephen Ingles.
Yes.
Amy Wall.
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay. Tom Markham.
Yes.
And Suzie Bayer, yes. Okay. Um. Doug, you are all set, right? So we're on the subcommittee?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so subcommittee updates. Um, the Finance and Facilities Committee met on, my goodness, when did we last meet? On the nineteenth. Which was, sorry, you guys, I, um. We've met since then. So we have not had a meeting, we have not had a finance and facilities meeting since our last meeting. So I have no update. We are meeting this week on Thursday. Sorry that I didn't think that one through before speaking. So no update from me. Um, Tom, Labor and Personnel?
Uh, yes, uh, uh, thank you. Excuse me. Um, the uh Labor Subcommittee has been uh meeting um, uh, uh, frequently in the last couple of weeks. We are right now engaged in um negotiations with uh Unit A leadership regarding um a uh school uh memorandum of understanding for the new school year uh with some uh concerns and conversations around um everything from, from opening of school to uh, uh, the, the new COVID concerns with regard to this year um, uh, around everything from masks to vaccinations and some operating and, and administrative of our procedures. Um, those conversations are going well, they're in negotiation, of course, and um we have our next meeting uh with the uh union leaders uh tomorrow week. So we'll be reporting back uh at our next full school committee meeting on that, on that work.
Okay. Um, Mike, Student Services?
Yeah, we haven't met since our last school committee meeting. Uh, we are meeting tomorrow at four o'clock.
Kevin, I think you have a couple of updates for us for policy and communications?
Yes, yeah, the um Policy and Communications Subcommittee met. Um, we met last Friday, I think that was September tenth. We discussed a couple of different issues. The first on the agenda, if you remember, I reported last time that Ms. Ball, uh, acting as a member of the public, uh, came to our meeting and had suggested a, a number of different amendments, potential amendments to the rest of the stuff that the committee had passed. and had suggested a number of different amendments, potential amendments to the resolution that the school committee had passed uh, last, a resolution for the honoring of Native American culture and we had several weeks to reflect on this, on the suggested amendments. Each of us discussed the matter uh, during the subcommittee meeting, and ultimately would decided not to come forward uh, to the whole committee with any amendments. So um, from our perspective, um, we felt that the document should remain as is. With that done, then we turned our attention um, to the most recent draft of a new policy, actually first crafted uh, by Ms. Ingles, uh, a policy on logos, mascots, and team names. And so we had discussed it at our previous meeting, and at the meeting on the tenth, we reviewed the edits that we had talked about that were implemented based on the conversations that we had at the last meeting. Um, I also consulted with Superintendent Lyons, who wasn't able to be there um, last Friday, and so will be pleased to present tonight uh, a policy to be laid on the table as is um, the policy on policies uh, for the school committee. Uh, really meant to be a policy that ideally maybe would have existed, kind of got us into, I think, where we are now. But I think will provide a lot of guidance for the use of logos, mascots, team names into the future. So, uh, as always, Dave, we want to place it on the table uh, where people can comment and provide feedback on it. Suzie, do you want a motion to that effect?
Um, yeah, we do need, and we have one. Tom, um, there's a motion to lay that policy on the table in the motion sheet. And you're muted.
Sorry, yes, there is. Um, I move the school committee laying on the table for two weeks' consideration and for vote at the September twenty eighth, twenty twenty one school committee meeting, the Wakefield Public Schools District Logos, Mascots, Team Names Policy as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Michael?
Um, so I guess I have a a kind of an introductory question. Uh, can I ask questions about this document now, or am I supposed to wait two weeks to ask questions?
I think you can ask questions now.
Okay, so I'll I'll ask a question that doesn't pertain to this. Um, can you give a little bit more detail, Kevin, as to why you chose not to change the prior document at all?
You're referring to the resolution?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, I can speak for myself and certainly invite Ms. Ingles, I'm Ms. Lehman, to express their 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 positions. Um, you know, from my perspective, you know, at at the time, at the moment, at the time that the resolution had been passed, I I think it captures a moment in time, and I think the situation that had been taking place. Um, Mr. Ingles, I don't want to speak for him, but kind of laid out, I'll let him do it because he does it much more eloquently than I can. Um, kind of three different points, you know, that we think at least the Ms. Ball's amendments were, we're hoping to do to do. And one of them was to remove some of the emotion behind the document, and that proved the apology, which I know is something that they didn't particularly like, that the former members um, had put in there.
Hey, Kevin.
It's a little hard, you're kind of coming in and out, it's hard to hear.
Yeah, you, you're really, I don't know if you can get closer to that microphone and speak loudly.
Okay, I'll try a little bit more.
There we go, that's a little better.
Okay, great, all right. Um, you know, I think I think the bigger thing, you know, again, I'm only speaking for myself as thinking about placing that document at a place and time and what the intent of the document was. And in my personal opinion, the edits that were suggested did two things. Um, one was remove some of the emotion behind it, and I get that there's been some feedback that some people don't like of the emotion that was part of it. To me, and I think we delineated as a subcommittee, the difference between a policy and and a resolution. And again, not being a part of the committee at the time, I can make some assumptions that that was done for a reason, that it wasn't a policy that was put forward, but rather a resolution. A resolution captures a period of time, and 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 I think appropriately does have uh, the emotion. You think about the timing of it all that had happened um, in terms of, of the long process that all of you went through, a panel that had spoken so eloquently and emotionally. Um, and again, I don't want to speak for the authors of the of the resolution, but that's at least my interpretation as someone My other uh, concern with the suggested edits that were made um, have to do with it fundamentally changed the resolution. The resolution is meant to eliminate Native American imagery, not just what was the current logo. And in my interpretation of Ms. Wall, well, I don't think it's interpretation, what Ms. Wall is suggesting uh, was that we, that the resolution only addressed the current logo. Um, I personally support the elimination of Native American imagery. I think it's an appropriate thing to do for reasons, months people have said better than I can. Um, so that was my perspective on why um, I thought at this point we've moved beyond this, we're ready for this next policy to come forward, and and I don't suggest that the committee um, further debate the resolution. But I don't know if Mr. Ingles or Ms. Lehman want to contribute as well.
I I think you said it, you know, that was essentially the the gist, Mike, was when we went through the resolution edits that Amy had been suggesting, they fell into three categories. And it was essentially wordsmithing. Um, but and then there was the removal of the apology, and then there was the changing of the language to to allow for some compromise. Um, and so under those three sort of um, you know, buckets, um, wordsmithing didn't necessarily rise to the level of bringing it back to the full the full committee for a vote. Um, removing the apology on the basis of apologies don't belong in resolutions, it's that is often where you find emotion is in resolution documents, whether it's um, to denounce something or to praise something, that's often in in resolutions. And then to Kevin's point, the other one, for the compromise, the specific intent as you read it in the in the resolution, must remove Native American imagery, and then so to come back on that and say that um, just, just not the current logo would fundamentally change the document as it existed, as the previous school committee had voted for it. Um, so it yeah, for the for the reasons stated previously by Kevin, and in my opinion, also did not raise the level of bringing it forward to the subcommittee, or to the full committee.
Amy, anything else? Amy Lehman, I should say.
So um, not being fully um, understanding of what a resolution is, where it actually sits in a school committee, um, how often we're going to go back and refer to it, that that was one of my questions. Um, I wasn't opposed to changing um, more of the emotional piece. I felt like Amy Walls spent a good amount of time to come to our subcommittee meeting, and I'm sure she didn't represent just herself. And I, and when anyone comes to me as a school committee member, I'm I'm gonna listen to what they have to say, so I mean, I didn't want to change the overall like retirement of Native American imagery, but there were some other pieces that I just wasn't opposed to, but um, I'm I'm okay with, I I understand Kevin and Stephen's perspective, and and I understand their perspective too, but I also was open to what Amy had to say as well. And that's kind of where we landed.
I appreciate all your opinions. Uh, but I seem to recall when we had our strategic planning offsite, that Dorothy Presser made it very clear that this was a policy and not a resolution. And um, uh, I believe, I'm pretty sure, I'm confident, and that was her comment, that this was a policy. So I think the resolution rules kind of go out the window, given that fact base. Now, you can agree or disagree with Dorothy, and that's fine as well, but I think that was the big concern for me personally was having a policy document that has emotion in it, and some other language challenges was problematic. So, and I think we've kind of interchangeably used resolution and policy. We're talking about this policy versus the old policy. Well, was the old one a policy or was it a resolution? So I think we have to be consistent in that, so if if it was a resolution and we disagree with Dorothy and her assessment of that, then, okay, I guess a motion can stay in it, but I'm pretty sure, and anyone else who was there can let me know whether they disagree that Dorothy specifically said it was a policy.
Mike, I I think there's an important nuance there, which is a resolution is a policy, but a policy is not a resolution. I'll say that again. A resolution is a policy, but a policy is not a resolution. So Dorothy did say that the resolution was a policy. It is, it is something we voted on and we need to stand by. But if, and I've only been a part of maybe the the voting on, I don't know, three or four resolutions. They often come from um, at the town level, town, that the uh, town council votes on it, the Human Rights Commission. You know, it often is around emotional things um, regarding kind of equality, anti-racism, um, violence. Um, I'm trying to, I I really feel like tho- those are probably the ones that we've been involved in. And and they are about a kind of a point in time with something that was going on that we were denouncing, and that we were kind of agreeing as a community or as a body that we um, felt a particular way about it. And so I think that to me, the nuance of what Dorothy said that day is that a resolution needs to be adhered to like it is a policy, but not every policy is a resolution. And I I don't know, Tom, if you want to weigh in or if anybody else wants to weigh in on that, but that's kind of my interpretation of of what the distinction was that she was getting at in that meeting.
Uh, yeah, no, I I I certainly gladly gladly weigh in, and 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 Suzie, I think you've articulated that well. And and uh, thank you, Mike, for asking the question. Um, you, so one one thing I'll say, and and we're well into it now, but we are far afield from the motion on the floor. But because the motion on the floor, I'm not sure we we, but anyways, regardless of that piece, we're we're far afield from that. But none, but nonetheless, um, I I think you've articulated it well, Suzie, the the a a a a resolution uh, is is very typically um, something that is put uh, in place by an elected body to represent a period of time or some or an occurrence that the committee either supports or opposes, or makes a makes a value statement at a period of time. Um, it doesn't often have the same uh, weight and power of a policy. It has more to do with, at least in my um, uh, view over the years, and 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 policy, excuse me, resolutions over the years have more to do with with a value statement, speaking from a, what type of community um, that we aspire to be, or what type of uh, committee uh, or a school district that we aspire to be. Uh, when we talked about exactly the type of things that you rattled off, Suzie, uh, we talked about, you know, anti-violence, we talked about anti-discrimination. Um, uh, this to me is sort of, you know, in that, in that line of of thinking. Um, one of the things that I know we discussed um, at some length uh, last spring, uh, last winter and last spring, when discussing uh, the 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 evolution of the resolution um, was very much that it would very likely lead to a policy um, that we needed in order to execute um, the the resolution as sort of a uh, sort of a set of marching orders, if you will, or a directional piece. Uh, we needed to appreciate how that was going to work out. Um, that's why things in the resolution, just speaking in some very broad strokes about the formation of task forces and subcommittees, and the inclusion of the community members and school department uh, folks and students and alumni and others uh, to help fully form the thoughts. Um, and I think that's the beginnings of what the policy committee is is bringing forward tonight. I I think so, and that's my read of it. Um, so, you know, I I I don't, I'm not quite sure that the debate between policy and 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 resolution is a is a worthwhile one, if we're trying to, you know, trying to, you know, change it. I I think if 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 we're working toward or some members of either the committee or the community are working toward the the amendment or the or the or the uh, rat- of the erasing of the resolution, then we should just talk about that. Let's not parse this, it's not parse the, you know, the the irrelevant distinction uh, that that, you know, you know, the pathway that we're on, the the thrust of the resolution from last spring uh, was certainly representative of a divided community and a divided committee. But nonetheless, the thrust of the resolution was the elimination of Native American imagery. And then the rest of the bullets were about ideas on how to do that fairly, and who to, who should be represented on on committees and part of that process, but so, anyway, I if if we're if we're gonna have, if we're gonna have a discussion
No, no.
about that, and I I don't think we get there by the parsing of the differences between policies and resolutions.
Definitely wasn't my intent. Yes, I wanted to understand the logic of why, and that was really it. So so you clarified the your perspective, so I appreciate that. Um, I did have a question, a couple of questions on this uh, document. Um, at the bottom of the first page, it says the superintendent or their designee shall make every effort to have current WPS students represent a majority of the committee membership. Have you guys discussed yet how that student population will be selected? Criteria, a- any thoughts yet, or is it too early?
No, I mean, I think one of the, one of the important things when we were creating this policy was not to be so prescriptive that it was going to be impossible limiting to the individual who was assembling the committee. Could be the superintendent, could be their designee, depending upon where it is that a logo or a mascot is being proposed. But what was, what was really critical to to us, though, was that students represent a majority of whatever committees assembled, that this at the end of the day is is about the students and what they want to have represent them in their school community. I'm a proud alum, and I certainly have a lot of feelings about it, but at the end of the day, I'm no longer wearing the jersey, so to speak, uh, or the band uniform. So we did want to have something in there, not be so prescriptive, but that every effort should be made, that students at all times will represent a majority of the committee based on the other membership. So if it's a high school logo, it'd be high school students and
Yep, no, that sounds good. And I only have one, by the way, this this is is a good document, you know, I think it's done very well, and it seems to be very level-handed in the way it's done, so kudos in relation to that. The only other question I had was that there, um, page two, it says anonymous suggestions shall not, shall not be accepted. And I'm just curious why you included that. Why can't someone submit a suggestion anonymously? It's a second page, bullet four, and then it has a three next to it for some reason. It's under the paragraph that starts with the committee shall develop a list about the three potential mascots. So wh- why can't it be anonymous?
Uh, Stephen, might I take that?
I I think that the thought is that it, you wouldn't just want, sorry, in my head, I have this idea of when like municipalities will go out and say, hey, name our our plow truck, or name our, you know, tugboat or whatever, you get these just outlandish, and there's a filtering process for that. Um, along those lines, and along the idea that we want student participation in this, we're seeing it more of as a community sort of endeavor. Um, and so I think what you're trying to screen out for is sort of just the random person that just throws something in there with no sort of you know, accountability. What, now you say it, and I'm, and so now I'm thinking of, what if there's like some student that's, you know, an art student, and they're just a little
Whatever.
Yeah, a little bit of an introvert, and they don't want to put themselves out there like that. Um, it's a good question.
I think you're better, you're better to accept more that you have to screen than limiting a suggestion, which I think this is doing.
That's a good point.
Yeah, the number, the number, oh, go ahead, and the number three is referring to the section above. It just, it does look odd, I've I've looked at that a number of times. It's, but it's not limited to the methods included in the above section three. To the section.
Uh, oh, that's right, yes, you're right. I'm sorry, Kevin, I do remember reading that, now just said that.
I've done the same thing, though, a couple times.
Just goes away, it flows to the next line. So, yeah, I think it's just something to consider. I don't think you want to limit suggestions. If that means you get a few ones that are off off on left field, you know, better to, better to have the suggestion than limit it. That's just my, my thought.
So I am gonna, I, we lay this on the table for consideration for two weeks with the idea of coming back for the committee to ask those kinds of questions, Mike. I thought you may have had more kind of general questions about the the policy. No, 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 that's okay. So I think, you know, the next meeting, we'll have a chance to really kind of dig in on this and and make sure that we all feel comfortable with the language and and talk through it, and I believe even have the opportunity to kind of like edit it if we need to, kind of while we're at it. Um, but the idea is that the subcommittee has reviewed it fully. I think that the comments that you just made, Mike, are good ones for Kevin and Stephen and Amy to take back to the table to at least anticipate the possibility of kind of um, striking the the anonymous piece. Um, because I think you're, the the discussion we just had was a good one, um, and the and the goal would be to vote on that policy um, with edits um, at the next meeting. It it also, we laid it on the table to give the public opportunity to come and um, to comment on it as well um, at the next meeting. So that's, that's kind of the the process, right, for laying a a fully new policy on the table. For laying a, a fully new policy on the table. It needs to be, it needs to sit there for two weeks.
I, I agree with the process, because otherwise, if this were a twenty page document. What are we gonna read it during the meeting? So I agree, putting on the table is the best approach.
Yep.
Absolutely.
I just want to make um, a co- two comments. The, this, this. Policy that we're reviewing, you also want to review it in a lens that it's for any school. It's not just about, you know, if, if the Dolberg wants to change their mascot or their school name, this is what they would use. So. Sort of look at it that way too. And then for the larger community, I know we've gotten some emails, like no work has started yet. No one has missed out on any opportunity to be part of the committee. So that won't happen till at least after our vote in two weeks.
Right, to, actually, Amy, that's a great point, right? This, we are waiting for this to get approved before the working group. To relook at the high school logo is being put in place. This has to, this has to get done and voted on and approved before we can move forward with that. Amy Wall, I think you had something.
Yep, and I don't know if it is, if I should bring it up now or in two weeks, but. One thing that's been standing out to me is that there's no mention of the Beard or Galvin families in this at all about having them be a part of. The um, task force. It's something that we took away from them, that their families created, and I just think it would be. Appropriate to maybe have them have some input into what's going on since they were kind of, you know, something of theirs was taken away.
Yep, so Amy, I, I think that was right again, to Amy Lehman's point just now, that policy is written. In a generic kind of way, that is to think about logo review across. All cases, right? When we get ready to build the working group for the high school. I think that, that it has been made very clear. Um, and I think the intent was always there to include the Baird family for sure. I think the, the Galvin family. I know for me, that is kind of a newer request that we've seen come in via email. Um, from a couple of community members. Um, so I think absolutely there is, is um. The opportunity for us to think about how that group looks when we think about the high school logo specifically.
Okay.
I can jump in.
Make sure, yeah.
Amy, I'm sorry. I think probably what you could have done differently, cause you did talk about not being too prescriptive, Kevin. Is under community members, I would have just left it at that. You've included two, two uh, potential options. Alumni and athletic boosters, probably would have been together, just not have any examples there to keep it a little bit more broad. But then that's a, well, if you put them in there, why isn't the Baird family in there? Why isn't the Galvin family? You've kind of opened it up by putting that language, so you may want to make it more broad in the final version.
Well, I think, you know, what it says there, it says uh, community membi- mem- uh, or members, like, you know, you can do either. So it can be as many people as you want it to be, or whoever is creating this. In this case, maybe the superintendent. But at the high school level, we wanted to ensure that up the community members that it included. An alum, and it included a number of athletics booster. So they can be, this committee can be thirty-five people. It's totally up to um, and that either the superintendent or their designee of what that will be. And again, not to beat a dead horse, but uh, I think this is a good one, that this is a gen- general policy. It's not just about uh, the new uh, high school logo that was gonna be worked on. Yeah.
Tom?
Uh, thanks, um. So, uh, so I, I agree with, uh, with Amy Wall's point uh, about the inclusion of the, uh, the, the Beard family. And, and certainly the Galvin family as well. In fact, if we were to hearken back to the spirit of the resolution. The uh, inclusion of the Beard family is specifically mentioned in, in the resolution as part of the, the process now. I know these are, you know, we're now working as, as Amy Lehman very succinctly put us on that this is a larger document. That will have a life and an existence beyond the new high school mascot, right? Um, so we may want to, when, when rolling out, uh, or when implementing the, the committee and the brainstorming around. The new high school mascot, uh, we may want to ha- ask the, those to at least reflect back on the spirit of the resolution. Which did include uh, references to the, the Beard family. Um, because of the importance and the, the significance um, that, that they have held. Uh, and the Native American community here in Wakefield. So I think that's a great point, and I don't think that should be lost in that what I think the policy subcommittee tonight is bringing forward. Is a much larger document that will live beyond um, whatever, the next six months or eight months, whatever it takes to. Uh, to come, to come forward with the new high school mascot. So maybe it's a nice, um, you know, capturing. Uh, the spirit of sort of the bullet points articulated in the resolution, I'm sure will be. I would speculate would be a strong influence uh, over, over us moving forward in, in a number of ways. Um, for another example might be what types of considerations are, are we going to have with regard to um. Uh, you know, some long-term uh, memorials or displays. Um, for the Beard family and for the Native American community in the new high school, as we're making those design. Another part of the, of the resolution to make sure that Native American history isn't lost um, at all. Um, so I think Amy, Amy raised a great point. I think we should make sure that that happens. Maybe that's just something that. The superintendent and the high school principal, when ultimately establishing the committee on the new high school logo, uh, you know, takes that to heart.
I guess Doug's phone's gonna start ringing off the hook after this is put on the table tonight, so we'll see how that plays out. Can I be on it? Can I be on it? So.
Um, I, quick question. So I had just a couple of comments to make about the resolution. I don't know if you want me to do them now. Or after we vote on putting this for two weeks.
I would like to go ahead and vote and get that motion, and then Amy, would you mind holding those to your comments at the end? Which is gonna be three minutes from now anyway.
Yep.
Hopefully. Okay, I'll let you go first.
Okay, thanks.
Um, okay, so we've, we've had discussion, the motion is on the table, so I'm going to do a roll call vote now. Um, Amy Lehman?
Yes.
Kevin Piscadlo?
Yes.
Mike Boudreau?
Yes.
Stephen Ingles?
Yes.
Amy Wall?
Yes.
Tom Markham?
Yes.
Uh, Susie Bayer, yes. Okay, um, future dates and agenda items. So on our agenda, it says our next meeting is on the twenty eighth. There is actually another meeting happening next Tuesday that is a workshop meeting. Where Dorothy Presser is going to join us um, to spend some time talking about the setting of district goals. Which we started to talk about at, at the retreat, but didn't get very far. Um, as well as kind of how those relate to um, the evaluation process that we need to do when it comes to um, Doug's. Um, evaluation that should happen this spring. That meeting is planned for seven o'clock um, next week. Doug, you and I need to get together on exactly where it's gonna happen. But I, I could bet that it might be happening at the Galvin in one of the project rooms, but we will. Um, we need to get that figured out in the next day or so, so that we can get that agenda um, posted. And um, everybody get the details that they need, but um, that is the actual next meeting. Um, and then we'll have a meeting the following Tuesday on the twenty eighth. Um, so then we're gonna go to school committee comments, Amy?
Sure. Um, what I found a little troublesome about the resolution, I understand the. The reason that it is that I had to act as a member of the community, and so therefore I wasn't allowed to, um. I don't want to say discuss, but kind of bring up why the ideas that I had to put in place. I just find it troublesome because I feel as if I was able to explain why I wanted to make the changes that I did. That it may have had them look at things a little bit in a different light. And I'm very disheartened that it's not, that they decided not to put it to the full committee. Um, just one example, just to use the Native American imagery. Because Amy Lehman had brought up a good point. At one point, she says, who's to determine what is Native American imagery and who, who is to determine that? If an idea has been brought to me by more than one person about doing an eagle. You know, maybe a Native American image of an eagle, a drawing or something like that. And an eagle symbolizes a lot of different things, and I know it's meaningful to the Beard family for one, um, but it's also meaningful to many people. So something along those lines. So when I say Native American imagery, I think a lot of people might be. I don't know if they're just not understanding, if I'm not explaining it well enough, I don't know. I just, uh, I wish that it was something that could be brought back that we could have a full discussion on, um. So that I was able to explain the reasoning behind different things that I wanted to address in the resolution, not just because. I like the logo. That's not the reason behind any of it at all. Um, so that was the whole point of like a compromise was to bring up something that. An image that both sides of the, you know, Native Americans on both sides that they can agree with. Um, if we have, you know, a resolution for this, then are we gonna need resolutions for everything else as well, every, you know? That it comes down to, we can barely have a color, you know, so it's just. I don't know, I just, I wish that we could have discussed it more as a whole group. So that's my two cents for tonight. Um, welcome back to school, everybody, and I hope everybody is staying safe and having fun and wishing you all a good school year.
Amy, um, Amy Lehman?
I just have a couple of quick things. Uh, and during the chair comments, you had mentioned the email we got. Uh, for, it looked like public, for support for the, the bills that are coming up for vote and so on. Over the next two weeks, if you could, or I can research. Um, has the school committee ever done that in the past? Like what are, what are past practices? Because I don't want to become a lobbying group for every bill that comes up and, you know. I just don't want to go down that path if it's never been done before. And then just welcome everyone back. Um, I'm excited. I personally feel like we're in a better place than we were last year at this time. And, and we're gonna have testing soon, so I'm optimistic that we're gonna have a great school year. Thank you. Thanks to all the administration and teachers for everything they've done so far. Means a lot.
Kevin?
I'll pick up where Amy just left off. Um, just want to welcome everyone back and congratulate. All our teachers and staff and administrators and a successful opening. Um, from what I've heard and from both students and families, just the energy was great. It was so wonderful to be back and. And people are just so happy that uh, we're able to be back in person. Um, although it's gonna be a lot of work and kind of acknowledging, um, that it's gonna be challenging. But the energy to have back in all the schools and to have our, our staff and faculty back is great. So just want to welcome everyone back and uh. And look forward to a great year.
Mike?
Uh, yeah, I was, uh, was sitting at the nine eleven ceremony on Saturday night and it was really well done, as Tom had said. And, you know, I was just thinking back to that time and just afterwards where the country kind of came together in some way, you know, we were kind of unified. Uh, and that was certainly a terrible time, but a wonderful time at the same point in time and. You know, I looked at what we've gone through over the last year and a half as a Wakefield community and how we have divided ourselves on so many different levels. And uh, I hope, hope we can kind of take some lessons from nine eleven. And can we can try to bridge that gap a little bit better. You know, we're gonna have disagreements like we have tonight. I respect every one of yours opinion immensely, uh, and uh, and I'm truly enjoying working with you. So I, hopefully there's some lessons learned way beyond us, but I think we're doing a pretty good job trying to build a good model in that regard. And I appreciate all of you for all you do to, to help keep things moving forward as well. That's it.
Stephen?
Um, yeah, uh, welcome back to everybody. Um, we, uh, our kids are part of a, a twelve. Student bus stop this year. It's epic and fantastic, and there are so many new kids. And it's, it is so great. Um, and my kids are, are really jazzed, their friends are jazzed. They're so happy to see each other, whether it's in school, academy, in the cafeteria on the playground. They're just, it's so great to see the communities come back together. And all of those connections be remade. Um, and it's just been fantastic. Um, sort of, I know of something going on at the Woodville, which is there's a student, um, I think it's. Oh, I'm, I'm gonna miss his first name, Creos, I think is his last name, um, is doing a cradles to crayons, um, drive. Um, which I think is, is great. Go ahead, Doug.
First name Noah.
Noah, um, sharp, sharp kid. Um, and just, you know, out of the goodness of his heart thought. You know, he'd bring this to his, his school community and just look for some outreach. Um, and I think he's getting a lot of good um, feedback, so just wanted to highlight that. Um, has been fantastic. Um, and then I would just, for committee members, um, Mass Association of School Committees is doing a. A refresh on how you evaluate a superintendent on Friday, I think, or like a lunch and learn. So maybe in preparation for next week, just a heads up.
Doug, do we know Noah's mother by any chance?
It, it is the.
Congratulations, Aaron. You did a good job. I know you're still on the call.
I cut you off, Aaron, go ahead.
I just said I'm still here.
So yeah, you have to tell Noah, amazing job. We're really so impressed.
I will, he's very excited to kick it off.
That's terrific.
Um, before I turn to you, Tom, I think Stephen, most of what they will cover in that Friday session, that MASC session. Is probably what Dorothy will walk us through. That, that's my guess, although we're gonna have a shorter period of time with Dorothy. Um, if people have the time and are interested in attending that session, feel free, but I do think it will be repetitive. And to some degree as to, to what Dorothy will talk to us about next week. Um, Tom, go ahead.
Uh, uh, thank you. Uh, just if I could, just a couple of quick thoughts, um. Um, uh, sort of bouncing off the, the, what both, both Amys had to say. Um, uh, cause I was, I was intrigued and, and inspired uh, by them. Uh, to Amy Lehman's question. It is not untypical at all for uh, school committees around the, the state to take positions on legislative matters. In fact, I think at one point in time, probably all seven of us have run on, well, let's reform chapter seventy type of. Conversations, a type of po- political positions, right? That's all about lobbying. Uh, when we reach out to Senator Lewis or, or Representative Wong. Um, or Representative, you know, uh, Alipar Garabedian, it's all lobbying and, and we should do that. We should engage, I think actively in uh, the helping to set of statewide policy for things that, that we feel are important to Wakefield's kids. Um, we did it twice uh, last year, for example, uh, when we chimed in on, on the position of MCAS. Uh, with regard to MCAS being implemented last spring. Uh, that was one thing that the school committee chimed in on, and the other uh, was the issuance of correspondence to the commissioner and the governor. About moving teachers up higher on the, on the, um, on the COVID vaccination, um, 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 priority list. Um, so it's not atypical, uh, whether we like or dislike the, the issue before us, I think, um. My two senses, it's important that we do engage in that, that sort of stuff. That's probably something whereas we could very nicely represent. Uh, the community to, to the state and, and have us uh, have that peace. Uh, you know, so Amy, I would love actually to work uh, with you on hearing more about what some of your thoughts are. I have, I would love, uh, you have every right, by the way, which is none of my business, uh, 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 but I'll say as a friend and a colleague. You have every right to bring this matter forward yourself. Uh, you know, we did the, I think you, you followed the procedure as. Uh, fairly articulated by, um, uh, you know, at the retreat we had. Uh, but there's nothing that says that any member can't bring any matter forward. So uh, the type of questions that you raised this evening in your comments moments ago. Uh, don't necessarily fly in the face of the resolution. They may be clarifying questions. Uh, anyways, I, I don't want to start a new thing. I, I, I want, I don't, I want us to land in a square, an honorable place at all times. Um, that brings the community together, not further divides it, but uh, if there's a square common ground that we can find, I'm, I'm all in. Um, and then just to say, you know, welcome back. It has been, uh, it has been a really busy summer for many people. Uh, certainly for the administration, thank you for your extraordinary work all summer. Uh, thanks to the, to the, to the teachers for really, um, again, doing human work, taking hopefully a. Well-needed and well-deserved break this summer, but coming back in, in such a high quality and high professional way. Um, it's really been, it's really been a pleasure to, um, you know, to, to, to have spent some, spend some time with the leadership, at least in the last. Couple of days to really see people's spirit and, and enthusiasm. So just again, welcome back. Have everyone have an awesome school year. Thank you for everything.
Um, so I'll close um, with a quick update from my um, liaison role. For the Environmental Sustainability Committee, which actually ties into just um, my other comments. Um, we had a meeting last, uh, last Thursday, and we spent um, a decent amount of time hearing from another member. Who i- uh, works for an architecture design firm that builds um, schools or to build, design schools. Uh, their company did not um, put in a bid for our project, so there's kind of no conflict of interest there. or to build design schools. Uh, their company did not um put in a bid for our project, so there's kind of no conflict of interest there. And she she just spoke to the committee about the kinds of things that 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 the Environmental Sustainability Co- Committee might wanna think about when um as kind of the 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 process um uh starts to go down the path of visionings, um, meetings and those kinds of things. It was really informative. And it was exciting just to talk about and think about um the new high school. Um, my kids started at the at the high school um last week. I have twins who are ninth graders, so that was their their first year, you know, coming out of the Galvin and going to the high school and um and my daughter and I actually had gone in um a a day, a couple of days early to meet with um with a student services um person. Um, and I had the opportunity to sit in the hall while my daughter spoke with her and it listened to social studies teachers. They were on their lunch break um on the the second professional day. And I could hear a lot of chatter and um, uh, you know, discussion and joking around and sticking their heads out in the hallway and yelling down at each other and um, and it really was a really quite a nice vibe um that I could feel there. Um, and and I I've heard people say this before, but I I'm already feeling it. We're already, we're only four days in. Um, the high school is not the building. The high school is the people that are there. It will be wonderful when Wakefield has a new high school. But at the end of the day, what really makes the high school special are the teachers and the staff that are in it. And my kids are already feeling it, and they're only four days in. I felt it sitting there in the hallway, listening to the teachers kind of talk to each other. Um, so I'm really excited about um this year for my for my two at the high school. And as I said, it'll be great when we have a new high school, but that building isn't, isn't what makes what's going on um there happen. It's it's really the people and it's a special place, uh regardless of the state of the uh the science lab or how hard hot it is on the third floor. Um, so thank you to, a special thanks to all the high school teachers, um, cuz I know that building is is um not an easy one to teach in. Um, but certainly you guys are are making a a great environment and making it um a a great start for um, for our our newest kids in the in the building. Um, and with that, I think we can uh make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, I move the school committee adjourn its meeting of Tuesday, September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Uh, motion made and seconded, uh, discussion? Seeing none. Amy Lehman?
Yes.
Uh, Kevin Piscadlo?
Yes.
Mike Boudreau?
Yes.
Stephen Ingles? Amy Wall?
Yes.
Tom Markham?
Yes.
And me, Suzie Bayer, yes. Thanks, everybody.
Bye-bye now.